Tuesday, June 24, 2016. Roll call.
Alderman Bukavitch.
Here.
For Halen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Guzekowski is excused. Uh, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, folks. Item three is the approval of minutes of June 7, 2016.
Bukavitch will make a motion to approve the minutes of 6:00, 7:16. Does he call Gail second?
Roll call.
Alderman for Halen.
Hi.
Toman.
Williams, Dean.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bukavitch.
Aye.
All right, slight switch in the order. I'm gonna move 14 up and say a motion, a consideration of a motion to waive all fees for Oshlagger Dahman American Legion Post 434 for an upcoming HVAC project at the post upper hall located at 9327 South Shepherd Avenue. Come on up. A little brief comment from our...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, common council members, and citizens of Cityville Creek. I'm Ed Sichniewski, I'm the adjutant of post 434. And greetings from our past commander now Lyle Riffel, who has thanked the city for its good relationship between our post and the common council, the Cityville Creek, and its citizens. We are here because we are trying to upgrade our HVAC system. It's been around since the 1950s, and so it's about time that we have secured funds in order to replace that equipment. I would also like to introduce John Edelblute IV. He is our new post commander, and again, we will appreciate, again, our good relationship between the common council, citizens of Oak Creek, and our post. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council.
He just identified for the record name and address.
John Edelblute. My address is 3952 East Edgerton Avenue, Carahay, Wisconsin, 53110.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the council, and the mayor, and everybody here tonight. I am looking forward to working with you through the next year of my first term anyways, and I look forward to seeing everybody on the 4th of July, and other events, Oak Creek Night Out, and everything else that we got going on over there this year. So, thank you very much. If you have any questions, you can get ahold of Ed. Ed can always get ahold of me, and I'll be dropping off some business cards here to the City Hall for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
Just to congratulate you, I've known John for years, I'm sure he'll do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Other questions, motion on 14?
I have a question.
Sure.
And a comment. Is it common for us to waive the fees for nonprofits? And are we setting a precedent by going down this to nonprofits within the city? We have Salvation Army, Community Center, things of that nature. It's my understanding that within the city, we charge our own departments for fees. And we've always set a budget, we're looking to just recoup what our inspectors do. So, I think this might register, you know, whether it's voted tonight, I think we really have to look at the policy itself and see what we're gonna do, because if we grant, kind of if we grant it for them, where do we stand if Salvation Army comes in? Where do we stand if Goodwill comes in, or any other nonprofit? Although, I don't know about Goodwill being a nonprofit, but, besides the point.
In order to answer your question, Alderman Bukavitch, is that we give back to the city for what we take in. That was one of the main criterias that Mayor Bolander had set up some time ago, saying, "What do we get? What do we get? What does the city get from these nonprofit organizations in order for us to waive such fees for permits, or any other charges that the city may have for these nonprofit organizations?" We return that money back. We, right now, we, our post has sponsored three individuals from high school, the Badger Boys recently. That came up to be $750. And so you can see that we also give back to the VA, we always give back, we always give back to the community. And the more we can give back, the better we are as an organization.
And I appreciate that. I guess what you're telling me is there is a written policy within the city somewhere that it's actually...
I think it was a criteria that Mayor Bolander gave us in order to ask for waiver fees. I don't see that there is a written policy from the city regarding nonprofits.
I guess going forward, I think we need to, you know, regardless of where we go tonight, I think we need to define that and make sure, because it's kind of a he said, she said. I mean, unfortunately, Mayor Bolander's no longer with us today.
This is correct, and I think what you can do is this is certainly, if you want to establish, the city wants to establish a policy in regards to nonprofits, I'm certainly sure that the nonprofits can be accommodable and work out a solution with the City of Oak Creek.
To the administrator?
There is a written policy on the waiver of fees. I can't cite all the details of that, but I've seen it before. It's historic, so I'm not sure it's been looked at relatively recently. We could certainly circulate that, and get direction from the council in terms of what you'd like to do in the future. There actually is a written policy.
And I know I've sat either as a mayor or a council, looking, seeing these items come up on agendas in the past, and, you know, I really agree with what Inspector Ed said. It's, you talk about the merit of waiving a fee for a reason that's substantial and benefits the community, I think that's a really valid, valid one. I would look at all of them individually, and I would welcome our 501(c)(3)s to come up and ask, on a case-by-case basis, because I know we've done, I'm gonna say, tens of them since I was an alderman seven years ago, eight years ago, so I know that there's been precedents set that way, and I certainly agree that Mayor Bolander had that, whether it was an unofficial policy or real policy, always looking at what was given back. So, I would support this motion tonight, and if we want to revisit that, that policy, I think that's a great future item for an agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Any other questions or comments? City clerk?
I just wanted to add one other thing, is that when the American Legion, when that property was gifted from the city to the post, the intent was that the Legion remain active in the city and use it for city purposeful, purposeful reasons, and I truly believe that the Legion does that. I know National Night Out will be there this year, we have a lot of city functions that run there. Although, other 501(c)(3)s may fall into, you know, giving back to the community as well, I just, I'm aware of that policy, that they're, that they're supposed to keep it within the intent of good for the city, so I believe they try to do that with the events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But no other questions or comments, a motion on 14.
Gail, move to waive all fees for the Oshlagger Dahman American Legion Post 434 for an upcoming HVAC project for the post's upper hall located at 9327 South Shepherd Avenue.
Toman will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
For Halen?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving back to the original order, item four is a presentation on the City of Oak Creek 2016 survey results presented by Cobalt Community Research, who is here tonight to give us a short presentation on the results.
I'll make a few opening comments and introduce the speakers from Cobalt Community Research. We have William St. Amore and Pete Charette. This survey is a repeat, in some ways, of a survey we did in 2011. At that point, we had gotten 552 survey results, some from the survey, some online in our website. This year's survey, that combination was very similar in numbers, 578 representative surveys, which is nearly a 30% response rate from the surveys, which is a good response rate. It shows engaged community and interested in the survey. What you're going to see tonight is comparison of this year's numbers to 2011. You'll also see the American Consumer Satisfaction Index, ACS, ASCI. It will compare our numbers to both public sector and private sector throughout the country. That's gonna be useful, and I think importantly, for the next item on the agenda, it's going to help as a segue into the, some of the strategic planning that the city is soon to engage in, and provide some direction on those matters. So, without further ado, Pete's going to show on the screens, and the council screens, the survey results, and get through those.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for the common council, for giving us the opportunity to work with the city again. We have a lot of data to run through tonight, but all the slides will be posted to the city website in the coming weeks, so if the public wants to review them further. Just a little background on Cobalt and who we are and what we do. We are a public sector nonprofit, and we're based in Lansing, Michigan. And again, we worked with the city on their 2011 satisfaction survey. The next slide gives some context into why doing these citizen research projects are very important. Citizen surveys really help you understand the priorities of your residents, and gives you support for making difficult decisions. And the bottom line is just a good government practice to engage your residents and see how their priorities are shifting as the economy, community dynamics, and other factors change. Some of the study goals, again, supporting your strategic planning, comparing your performance to the 2011 study, and then benchmarking your performance against a set of indices statewide, regionally, and nationally. So again, we did a random sample of 1,500 residents that we drew from the voter registration records, and we ended up receiving 578 responses, and you can see how that compares to the 2011 survey. One question that we typically get is, for a community of our size, do we have enough responses to adequately represent our community? And for a true random sample to reflect the population of the United States, you only need 384 responses. So when you have 578 for a community of your size, we know that the data is very strong from a validity standpoint, which basically means we have strong confidence that real changes are occurring in the city. And the bottom line, hundreds of your residents gave their time to give their feedback to you and provide direction for the city. So all of the data in the report is including both the volunteer and random sample responses. However, the cross-tabulations that you will be provided shortly give a breakdown on how each of those groups responded to the questions. Now, the bottom line, the city's overall American Customer Satisfaction Index score is 69, and you can see that it improved from a 68 in 2011. Now, the ACSI is the only national cross-industry benchmark of customer satisfaction in the U.S., and it allows you to compare your customer satisfaction scores to both public sector and private sector companies and industries. The ACSI is on a scale from 1 to 100, and it's a composite score of three items, so the overall satisfaction that residents have with the community, how well you have met or exceeded their expectations, and then how well you compare to the ideal community. A lot of communities that we work with often try to compare their score as if it was a grade in school, which a 69 would be about a C minus. However, that's not really how the ACSI operates. Nobody measured by the ACSI gets 100, and so to provide some additional context in a few slides, we'll give you some comparable data there. The drivers, these are not necessarily areas where you have higher/low scores, it's really where you have the bang for the buck in improving your overall scores, and those four components are local government, the economic health of the community, transportation infrastructure, and the library. On the next slide, these are some of the available tools that we provided to the city staff. It provides a detailed breakdown on each question by the different demographic groups, an online portal which allows for more nesting and custom dynamic cross tabs, and then also you have comparable data by state, region, and national benchmarks.
Pete, if I could just make a comment there, this is the kind of data that we're going to share with our strategic planning work group, so that if they need to, can dig into the numbers. This is tough stuff for the average person to get through, lots of numbers there, but it's some of the things that we can use to help in our strategic planning and break down different responses, different age groups, different income groups, and that may be important in some of the things we're looking at. So, it's probably not the kind of detail that the council and the community wants to get to, but we can share it if you're having a tough time sleeping at night.
The next slide gives the breakdown on who responded to the survey by the different demographic groups, and just the overall theme here is that the type of respondent, in terms of how long they've been in the community, their age, education, income level, it's very similar to what we saw in the 2011 survey. The next slide is just a sample of what the cross tabs look like, and the cross tabs are really helpful, because it helps guide your eyes to where scores are particularly high in blue, or low in pink and red. It also shows where there might be differences of opinion based on the different types of demographic groups. So columns that have all blue shading, that's where we know scores are consistently high regardless of the demographic. Columns that have more checkering, where there's blue and red and pink, that's, shows where, based on their demographic, there's some differences of opinion. And this will be a really important tool for you, the council, as it allows you to be more strategic with your conversations when you're out in the community talking with residents. So for example, if you know parks and rec facilities have lower scores with young families or women, you know that when you're out in the community and you see someone that falls into that group, you can engage them on the parks and rec facilities. Okay, the next slide, this graph shows all of the category scores covered in the survey and how they have changed from 2011, and you see a lot of green arrows on that third column, which is a good thing, because almost all the scores went up. The only four categories where scores declined were in the utilities, property taxes, remaining in the community, and then encouraging businesses to start up. The areas that are shaded in the green, those are the areas that really have a lot of juice in them in terms of driving your scores high. Next slide is looking at some of the key outcomes compared to your benchmarks. And so for the next few set of slides, they're set up pretty similarly, where we have your 2011 score in the gray, your 2016 score in the blue. The dark red is the Wisconsin communities overall, the pink, Wisconsin for similarly-sized communities, the green is Midwest communities, light green is for comparable-sized cities, and then purple, our communities overall, and then light purple, the comparable size. So when you look at that ACSI score, that C minus really puts it into context when you're outperforming all the benchmarks. So when you put it in context, it is actually a very solid score. You have higher scores for the community image, recommending the community as a place to live, softer scores for planning to volunteer, which is very common with a lot of the communities that we work with, and then encouraging businesses to start up. The next slide is looking at the component categories in the survey. Property taxes are a lower-scoring area that saw a drop from 2011. Economic health saw a significant jump increase from 2011. And then there's higher scores for fire, EMS, utilities, police, and the library, which saw a large jump from 2011. Okay, the next slide, the next one, there we go. Okay, so this next slide is plotting out your component scores. On the vertical axis, we're showing the performance of each category. So as you can see, the bottom of the scale starts at a 61, so even your lowest score is still a decent, decent score. On the horizontal axis, we're plotting out the overall impact that each of those categories has on your satisfaction and outcome behaviors. Categories that are off to the right have a strong impact on driving your scores upward or downward. Items off to the left, and particularly in that upper left-hand quadrant, have less of an impact on your scores, meaning that there's not a lot of juice in these categories, and they can seem more optimized. When we work with the community and they see fire, EMS, or police fall into that upper left-hand quadrant, they tend to think that it must mean that those areas are not important in the eyes of their residents. That is not the case. Those areas are more things that residents expect to work. This chart is really more about what differentiates your community from others. And the last point I want to make is that there's nothing really magical about where each bubble falls within the quadrants. It's really a mathematical equation that, looking at local government, for every five points you increase that score, you're gonna see a two-point increase on your overall ACSI score.
Pete, if I could just interject here, so the council and the audience will see property taxes at 61 in the lower-left corner. That's, I think, a perception issue more than a reality issue. I think the council understands very well that, for instance, the city property taxes have been held flat over 10 years, and I would say that that's pretty remarkable, but there's a perception issue, which means communications, or in terms of where some of those increases may be coming from, whether they're coming from any of the other taxing districts and so forth. So it begins to show you maybe some of the work that needs to be done in terms of reality versus the perceptions. You can start to go through that with some of the economic development that's gone on versus the perceptions, and I think those are kind of important to let you know, even given that where there's still some of those gaps. So I think those are really important things for the council to concentrate on, that's, boy, that doesn't look quite right based on what we've done or what we know to have happening, why is that? And that's what you need to do and dig into these surveys a little bit.
And to build in on what you're saying, Jerry, the fact that it's way down in that bottom quadrant, first of all, when we work with other communities, we always see taxes being a low score, regardless. Your score is actually quite a bit higher than other ones, as we'll show you in a few minutes. The other piece is that it is not a driver of satisfaction. When people look at the city and what they like about the city and what's driving the outcomes of them remaining and recommending it to others, taxes really don't even factor into the equation. They're looking at the things that are further, further over to the right-hand side of this graph. Taxes, while they don't like to pay taxes, that's not something that's really detracting from the satisfaction level that they're experiencing, and the quality of life and the services that they're experiencing.
The next slide shows how these scores and priorities have shifted from the 2011 survey. So you can see that there's a big shift in overall impact for local government management, the economic health of the community. Property taxes saw a shift into that bottom left-hand quadrant, and then the library saw a significant shift as well. The next few slides will show how each of those component scores were scored on the individual questions for those key driver areas. You can see here, we had listed out the local government management questions, so it's getting into whether leaders are trustworthy, well-managed government, well-trained employees, and you can see that the Oak Creek scores exceed the benchmarks across the board. The areas that do not have any benchmarks, those are just unique custom questions that we do not have any comparable data for. The next slide looks at the economic health of the community. Now, we know it saw a significant jump from 2011, so looking at what dimensions drove that increase are significantly the availability of jobs, stability of property values, and also the strength of the local economy. Looking at transportation, transportation infrastructure, again, we see higher scores compared to the benchmarks, falling short in the public transportation options and bicycle and foot traffic space, higher scores in exceeding the benchmarks for road signage, and also higher scores for street lighting. The next slide looks at the library. Now, I'm well aware that the city built a new library since the last survey, and as a result, the scores have jumped up across the board.
Adequacy of building score, in particular, remarkable, Inc.
The next slide shows the parks and recreation. So we're rating the parks on whether or not they meet the needs of the residents, the maintenance, the quality and variety of programs, and then the variety of amenities in the parks. You can see that they most, saw mostly higher scores in 2016, however, most of those are below the comparable Wisconsin communities, so that's one thing to keep in mind. Looking at police, high-scoring areas across the board, and again, exceeding the benchmarks in almost all of those cases. All right, looking into some of the planning and budget questions. So on the survey, we listed out several city services and programs, and then we asked for each one whether or not residents would support or oppose a tax increase to help fund it. Most areas saw opposition to any tax increases, however, there are five areas where there is more support than opposition, and those areas are increasing roadway maintenance, fire and EMS, police, the streets, parks, forestry department services, and then streetlight maintenance. On the next slide, we asked them if they were willing to support those different categories, how much would they be willing to pay annually to support it? Now, how to read this chart, each column is essentially its own pie chart, and it's showing the raw number of respondents that supported each of those options. Again, the five areas from the last slide really pop out, and for most, they would support a tax increase of $1 to $10 annually. However, there are some opportunities with the fire, EMS, and police to maybe jump into that $11 to $25 range. All right, the next slide, we asked citizens if they had reached out to any city staff or officials. We asked them to rate that contact, and the scores are fairly high across the board. However, they almost all saw slight reductions in the total service levels between 2011 and 2016. Looking at the city website, again, scores are fairly high, however, the ease of finding information and also the ability to complete transactions online could use improvement. We asked them, a new question in 2016 was to have them rate the city's social media presence, and most of these scores are higher in most cases than the city website. The next slide, we asked respondents if they know who their alderman is. 47% responded that, yes, they do, and again, the cross tabs will be helpful in targeting your message, as it shows how this question was answered by each district, so you can see where there are higher or lower levels of awareness.
There'll be some work to do there.
Yes. Looking at the residential housing market, we asked residents to rate the market in the city based on its availability in blue and affordability in green. There's lower availability of housing options for younger families and college graduates, and also empty nesters. Then there's lower affordability options for younger families, college graduates, and seniors. We had several questions dealing on the survey with the transportation infrastructure in the city, and this slide is showing the support for different funding strategies to increase the repairs or replacement to the infrastructure. In general, there's opposition across the board for these broad funding strategies, however, we know from a few slides earlier that if you have a specific infrastructure task, such as increasing the roadway maintenance, in a specific price point, there is opportunities there for gaining support in the community.
Point out that there are large numbers of undecided folks.
We asked in general, what are residents willing to pay annually to increase the level of repair or replacement to the city's infrastructure? And we see that 31% do not support any increased level. However, another way of looking at this graph is that almost 70% of residents would support some sort of increase. So again, if you're very targeted toward a specific activity and price point, there are some opportunities. Next question we asked, should, how should public transportation be expanded in the city? 48% said, "Do not expand in the city." 38% for the bus, and then around 20%... 20% for bike rental and train. We had listed out several different strategies that the city may consider in your upcoming strategic planning meetings, and areas that saw the most support from residents are converting streetlights to LEDs, establishing a full-time mayor, sharing services with other communities in the region, and then requiring body cameras for police officers. We asked if the city should invest a minimum of $60,000 in a one-time startup fee, and then $7,000 annually to provide live broadcasts of city meetings on public access TV. We can see that 69% do not support spending the money required to do that.
So this is the mayor's earlier comments in terms of the live streaming and how important that will be, as opposed to investing in the broadcast.
Hard to argue with almost a 70% no vote on paying $60,000 to broadcast meetings, although that was one of the proponents of when we did it the first time, but it didn't have that kind of price tag associated with it. And with technology the way it is, I don't know what the penetration of people that have access to the internet is, but clearly that's a direction that we have to look.
All right, in terms of communication preference, most residents prefer to receive their information from the city through newsletter, the website, the New Lifestyle Magazine, and then Facebook. And the bottom line is, you really want to have a multimodal strategy for the city to use to communicate with your residents. This would ensure that each resident would get the information that they need through the mode that they prefer.
Good news is we have all of those now.
Exactly. All right, the last three slides are word clouds from the open-ended comments that we had, and the larger the word appears, the more frequently that word came up in the comments. And the first question that we asked was, which streets are in special need of maintenance or repair? And the top themes that we saw are 13th Street and primarily 13th Street at Ryan Road. Other ones were Oakwood, Poots, Pennsylvania, and Rossin. The next slide, we asked, in the residents' opinion, what are the two most important issues facing the city of Oak Creek? Next slide, please. And we see here, the top themes are taxes. So there are comments on the high property tax rate, which again, could be a perception issue, better control of tax increases, managing the growth in the community appropriately, and balancing that growth with the tax rate. And then schools, so more schools to support the growing community and ensuring that they're quality schools. The last slide, we asked them, where do they want to see Oak Creek in 10 years, and what do they want it to be known for? The top themes, they want to see Oak Creek as a safe community, a great place to live, good schools, and has a vibrant business community with lots of shopping opportunities. With that, I know that's a lot of information to digest, I will open it up for any questions that you guys may have.
All right, council. Or comments?
Jerry, I think you, sorry, Mayor.
Alderman Gale.
Hit it on the head with the perception on the tax issue. Obviously, I think there's a couple of things working there. The annual revale is part of the deal, I think, with that particular, in terms of the perception. Cities obviously usually tagged with bearing the burden of school district or county tax increases, which are generally happening every year. So I think we definitely need to deal with and be proactive in terms of the perception on that particular issue. I know at the new city magazine, maybe that's a very pointed future article we could take a look at.
Article's already begun. So I've talked with our finance director, as well as our communications director. It's pretty clear that that's the case. We're trying to figure out how to do that in a softer community format, but get the point across. And so we're struggling with that, but we've actually had a team that has worked on that. I think our treasurer is well historically. So I thought we put out some pretty good information this year with the tax bills that talked about that. I think we're going to mirror that in some of our other communications and try to find out what works. But clearly, I think one of the last slides that Pete had there was that perception issue and how it gets distorted in terms of reality. And it's really important to pay attention to that because there's some things that we know that the city is doing very well, has held the line. That's not necessarily the perception from the residents. So there's a, you know, there's a communication gap there perhaps. But we also have to be very careful to make sure that we are listening to the residents in what they say, that those are important issues, because they still rate very, very highly in terms of what's important to the residents.
Well, Bridget's done a good job of bringing that to the finance committee in terms of the taxpayer lines, data that in any number of ways shows that Oak Creek ranks very low in terms of its tax burden on its citizenry. So we need to do a better job of communicating that fact.
Other questions? Yes, Alderman Toman.
How do we access the data as far as your breakdown with the different districts? I know you said that was available.
Can you email that out to all the council?
Is that available for the public too?
It will be on the website tomorrow, yes.
All right, thank you.
Report card, sort of. Other questions or comments?
Just one other comment. When we did this last time, I encouraged all the staff members to share this with the boards and committees that they are the lay-est onto, and I would repeat that request this year so that our city family, if you will, really has this information. And we had actually assigned, I think, Pete Wagner last time, to be the person to make the presentations and have some of that information. We'll think about who that is this year that can provide that support. Somebody will get the short straw. But I think it's important to share this with our board and committee members so that they know some of the issues that are driving the community, you know, as the council does, so that we're in sync on those things.
Got a question from Ron Pritzloff.
Does he hang on? Okay. What I was wondering was, certainly an exhaustive report, that's awesome. On the front end, I'd like to ask, what methodology was used to ensure that questions on the survey were not inherently biased or loaded? Is there a mechanism through which you guys go through on that?
Yes.
Who was the ultimate authority on what questions made it into the survey?
Sure, and that's something that we do work on with Cobalt. And that's one reason that we were hired by the city in the first place, is to provide that professional oversight and that level of credibility to make sure that there wasn't that kind of leading going on. The methodology itself is underpinned by the University of Michigan's American Customer Satisfaction Index. It's been around for about 20, 25 years. And we worked with them originally to set up the core set of questions, which we used in the survey. And then we add on some custom questions, depending on the particular needs of the community. So and then any other ones, we also test with other groups who are outside of the city, outside of Cobalt, to kind of eyeball it and say, yeah, those questions make sense. I'm not confused by them.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
You're welcome. One thing I would like to add, if I may, you mentioned briefly report card. And one thing I do want to point out is that the things that were really identified in the last survey for opportunities for improvement, we've seen remarkable improvements in all of those areas. Clearly, the voice of the residents have been heard, and there's been a lot of action taken, and the residents have seen those scores go up. And I think as you focus on improving communication even more, you'll see that even more so.
And I know as an alderman in 2011, and talking to other aldermen, I based some of my decision-making on, at least part of it, on those results, because that was clearly a true representation of what the community was thinking and feeling at the time.
And it shows. A lot of those scores have gone clearly to an A when you look at the comparables.
Anything else? Alderman Gale.
But Alderman Kuzakowski and I were just looking at that last slide with the cloud picture. Last time around, I think you, Steve, remember the restaurants was by far the biggest word in there, and it doesn't even appear. Oh, it's very small, but it is there. Shopping and...
IKEA was mentioned by name too, and that.
We actually shared that, and Mayor will recall this. We shared the survey results where we actually had the IKEA name, I think, last August when we began that discussion with them. So they thought that was pretty cool, that there was already support in the community for that, actually. So some pretty useful information for us from residents make decisions, and some of the private entities that are looking to make, you know, important investment and choices in the community.
Alderman McKeevich?
Just very interesting. And I'm looking at page 24, the support for tax increases, the fund options. It's really pretty ironic, because some of the bigger drivers within our budget are the things that people desire the most, and that's protective services, street maintenance, and a strong street department. And yet, as an alderman, some of your louder suggestions, I'll call it, is leaf pickup, community pools, things of that nature, and they really ranked pretty low on the priority list. It's really pretty interesting as to what we hear. And ironically, increased roadway capacity isn't really there, and yet we really need to focus on it, given what our growth is. And if you've been paying attention to meetings for the last six months to a year, it's all been about traffic and impact studies to the city and what's actually going on in this community. So very interesting results. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again. Great presentation. Look forward to diving in deeper on the results, but this is a good help to get us on our way to our next, actually, our next item, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, item five, it's a consideration of motion to approve the request for proposals, RFP invitation for the development of a community-driven strategic plan.
So I think the presentation, the discussion we just had was a great lead-in to this. Sig and Mike Kresik are going to primarily lead the discussion. I'm going to make just a few comments about this. We can refine in our strategic planning process some of those things that the council isn't quite sure on, that we got from the survey that we just saw. We have some opportunities to further focus in on those, do some of that, watch the paint-dry stuff where we get into the numbers. Other folks can, as the council has those questions. So I think it's really an opportunity for us to refine those areas and ask those questions. The last city strategic plan was done in 1989. I created a team here to pull the strategic plan together. I think they did an exceptional job, and I'll have them go through describing that and where we're going in terms of an RFP. So Sig and Mike, if you want to take it from there.
And then, just for the record, please identify yourself with your address.
Mike Kresik, Fire Department. Thank you, Jerry. Good evening. As the city administrator alluded, he did direct the creation of a strategic planning process committee to help guide the city through the development of a strategic plan. As mentioned, through the research our committee performed, the last formal document resembling a strategic plan for the community was performed in 1989 as a strategic development plan. Many of the recommendations from that plan were achieved, and it certainly did set the table and establish where the city is today. But under the direction of the city administrator, the determination was made that it is time for another strategic plan to guide the city into the future. I think this is a fair time to introduce the members of the committee that was formed, to recognize them for their efforts. Doug Seymour, Bridget Safrance, Ron Pritzloff, Leslie Flynn, Wayne Evans, I don't believe Wayne is here tonight, and Mr. Sig Tomkowski. I think it goes without saying, each of these, each person here is quite busy. And this is an added project that they have engaged in, they are excited about. They each bring a level of expertise and creativity to this process. And I don't think I'm out of line by saying each member of this committee is vested in seeing that this process is successful, and that the end result is a valuable strategic plan for the community. The role of our committee is more as facilitator than creator. We will not be creating the strategic plan. Rather, we'll be facilitating the process. A consultant will create that strategic plan. Our first task, our first milestone, is in front of you tonight, and that is the RFP. We have created a RFP for your approval to solicit applications from consultants for the creation of that strategic plan document. As you may have read in that RFP, we are looking for consultants that are experienced, that are able to review data in a useful manner, and report that data in a useful manner, and make sound decisions based on that. And I think the previous presentation is a great starting point for that data collection. We are looking for a consultant who is able to elicit and guide stakeholder input, and I think that might be one of the more critical components of this. We're looking for an individual that can communicate with all levels of an organization, all the important stakeholders, employees, department managers, civic groups, elected officials, and quite frankly, probably the most important component, the citizens of the community. We're looking for a consultant that can help us establish priorities and strategies to achieve our goals, a consultant that is adept at communicating across multiple levels through status reports, and ultimately, a consultant that can provide us with a final strategic plan document for presentation. The committee, our committee will be involved in many steps of this process. Upon the approval of the RFP, the committee will be responsible for reviewing applications from the consultants. We will select a certain number of consultants for interviews, and ultimately, our role will be to select the primary consultant and present to you for approval. We anticipate that will take place at the August 16 meeting. We will be in front of you with the recommendation for a consultant to take us through the process. The committee, at this point, we have a rather aggressive timeline. Upon recommendation of a consultant, work would start shortly after on the strategic plan, and we have targeted December 6 as a presentation date back to the council with a strategic, a final document. We understand that is aggressive, and I would offer that there may be some flexibility with that. Certainly, we would want to get a consultant on board, have them look at the scope of the project, and weigh in on if that is a feasible timeline, or if we need to lengthen that. $25,000 has been allocated to this project as part of the 2016 adopted budget. Understanding the aggressive timeline, understanding that it's a $25,000 expenditure, we do anticipate that the committee will have additional roles throughout the process. We anticipate that we will work closely with the selected consultant to provide research materials, to provide data, and to assist in establishing focus groups through the logistics involved in that, setting up meetings, reaching out to the community. So certainly with the timeline and the projected budget, we anticipate that this particular committee will have an active role throughout, working very closely with that consultant. At this point, I would like to turn the discussion over to Mr. Sig Tomkowski.
Thank you. Much of the research and information that we had gathered in the process of developing the RFP and getting a good orientation to strategic planning has been organized into a series of communications that Leslie Flynn has sent out. She's done a great job and prepared a very succinct report for your information if you'd like to review it further. I'm going to just make a few brief additional comments about the whole activity that we were engaged in as a collaborative group. Mike mentioned that strategic planning is a systematic, action-oriented planning approach to guide the city into the future. It focuses on the current reality, the priorities, the goals, and the actions necessary to achieve those goals. It's a process that has been based on input from not only the community, but from the elected officials, other groups, and the staff, so that we can gather and the consultant can gather all those things that they feel are important. It results in hopefully making intelligent decisions in the future with an objective basis for those decisions that many like to have, because if you're going to implement action, you want to make sure you're dealing with the important things, not necessarily the urgent thing. It can address priorities that can be addressed over time. It's not an instant putting thing where you have all of these things, and bing, 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 they're all going to be done, and you're on their way. In my experience, the strategic plan should be a living document that you review periodically. You may review it and say, well, we need to update this, we did this. You may review it and say, well, we need to update this, we did this, where's our next thing that we're going to go about looking at, but not let it to collect shelf on a shelf like I see many strategic plans in organizations happen. What is the importance of strategic planning for the city of Oak Creek? There has been a great deal of hard work focusing on the physical development of the city. That's very important, but the next step is to have a goal at this juncture to position the city for the competitive situation that we're involved in, in Oak Creek, and in competition with other cities, so that Oak Creek becomes a more attractive community and draws attention and interest in living here and investing in the community, obtaining higher education services that are available. It's to also create an understanding of where the city is now and where it may be going. And so, the future, again, is another element. And it also focuses on the priorities to move forward. And those priorities may be very limited. You may have eight or 10 priorities that you feel are very important, and you work on developing goals and action plans to move in that direction. It doesn't have to be a repertoire of 100 different priorities, but what are the most important and essential ones as this is developed? Someone said, I have a series of sayings that I've developed over my experience in life over the years, but it's an opportunity to let our decisions determine the future, rather than the future determining our decisions. One who fails to plan, plans to fail, in a sense, also. And a goal without a plan is just a wish. Those are some of the sayings that I thought about when I was working on this over the last couple of months, and Mike is laughing because he knows I have a whole repertoire, but these were the ones that came to mind. In my conversation with many and with you this evening, the word "future" is the important word that keeps popping out, popping out. We're all concerned about our future, whether it be for ourselves, for our family, for our grandchildren, or the future generations. And this is an opportunity for the city to focus on its future, which is very important. And I think we all want to help get that accomplished and move that forward as kind of a standard of operations here in the city of Oak Creek. In your role as stewards of the city, I'm sure you will feel that this is a responsibility that becomes very effective and very achievable in moving forward in your stewardship and guidance and policymaking of the city. It also has an opportunity to provide an objective basis as you develop budgets. So, those are some of the things that are kind of important. One of the bylines of all of this, too, is that we're creating a shared understanding of the plan, the communities involved, the community to can look at what's happening with the direction and the follow-through by everybody, and it provides an opportunity for their continued input as things move on. And it also provides an opportunity to attract others to the community, which is important. We don't want to just enjoy the city of Oak Creek by ourselves, we want others to come in and enjoy it and benefit from it. And it provides an opportunity to do that. And it has, some might say, well, what's the fiscal effect? Some of the byproducts of this will have a positive fiscal effect. So, for the $25,000, which, as I mentioned, I think we calculated, it's a tenth of a percent of a $22 million budget. That's, if this thing works out well, that was quite a, quite an achievement and a very prudent one, in fact, a very unusual one. I just want to thank you, though, for the decision to include me in this development process of getting the strategic planning initiative moving along.
Any other comments? All right, any questions from the council? I'll just have a couple of quick comments before I jump to those other folks. I'm guessing that 27 years between strategic plans is not a good guideline.
Well, actually, strategic planning with municipal government started about 30 years ago. So, Oak Creek was kind of in the forefront at 27 years. I found this out in my research on municipal strategic planning.
Did we revisit it at numerous points between 89 and 16?
I don't know. The only other thing Doug might know, there was something in 2002, which was a comprehensive plan, but I don't think it was specifically of this nature.
Thank you, certainly, Sig, and thank you very much. The 2002 comprehensive plan did kind of touch upon some of the same themes as the strategic plan, but you were right in your earlier assessment, that was really more hierarchized towards the physical development of the city and didn't touch upon some of those other factors. Certainly, this document is something that should be top of mind in every decision that we make, and if we can't point to our strategic plan when we're making a decision, something saying, this furthers our objectives in some way, I think that's something we've probably not had the opportunity to do so in the last, at least in the recent past, as we've really embarked on a number of initiatives. And really, I mean, those have addressed some of our strategic planning objectives, but it seems that in many cases, we could have looked for a little bit more clarity in terms of how they met our goals, rather than just reacting to opportunities that were there. And I think by having this defined set of goals and objectives out there as defined in the strategic plan, that's driven by the community, driven by, you know, all the stakeholders, I think it makes our decisions, your decisions, easier and really validates your decisions moving forward.
And the cool thing is, the last item was focused on 578 residents giving us their feedback and their input on all these issues that we presented to them, then we can actually take that information and, again, ask them for their help in putting this plan together that guides us for the next, you know, few decades. So, I think it's a good thing. Questions or comments?
Just a comment.
Mayor McGale.
This has obviously been a process kind of near and dear to my heart. I'm a strong advocate of not only this process, but along with this, the citizen engagement survey series that we've embarked on. I think it's really important that, as we have kind of internally been looking at what's the next act after kind of the things that have been in the hopper come to fruition, we really need to sit down and think hard about where we want this community to go, where the citizens want the community to go, as we have some guidance in place where we're not just reacting, like Doug said, the stuff that's coming to us, we're out there. Actually, we have a game plan, we have a thought process in mind, how is this going to work, how the citizens in the community are going to interact with those kind of developments. So, I think this is a very necessary process, and I really do appreciate the work that you folks are doing. It's a necessary, a necessary component of a really strong organization, a really strong community, so thanks again.
Thanks for the hard work. I mean, it's not easy to devote time beyond your regular work hours, and Sig, you're a resident, so you truly devoted your time and efforts and your incredible skill sets that you've had in all your long career and working, so I appreciate that.
I think Sig would pay us to work on it.
Well, we will take checks. Any other comments, otherwise? Alderman Gukic.
Thanks to the committee for stepping up. I know everyone's got a full plate, so this makes it just a little, little more on top, but that's okay. You got the right group and the right building to get this accomplished. I think the timeline might be aggressive, but the right team is in place. December 6, that's St. Nick, so if it's done by St. Nick, we'll have St. Nick baskets here. And then, lastly, I think the timing, too, on top of the Cobalt Study, and then with the new administrator coming in at some point, I mean, this is just a good vision that we can set forth for, as our roadmap going forward, so let's, kudos to everybody. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? We'll ask for a motion on item five.
I'll move to approve the request for proposals, RFP invitation for the development of a community-driven strategic plan.
Gukic will second.
Okay.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Gukic.
Aye.
Gukic.
Aye.
Under old business, it's a consideration of ordinance number 2811, repealing and recreating, thank you, everyone, repealing and recreating section 7.44, excuse me, of the municipal code regarding limitation of dogs on occupied premises and increasing the total number of dogs allowed from two to three. We discussed this at the last meeting. I've had some conversations with staff, police chief, on some other issues related to this that were brought up, related to breeds and cats. He doesn't see, and I'm speaking of the police chief in this case, doesn't see a great need to wander too far from this specific item. I raised it last week, I researched it with MADDAC and Milwaukee Area Domestic Animal Control. They see a need to raise the limit based on what other communities are doing, based on the need to not have pets killed, not pets, but animals be killed, so they could be someone's pets. I think there's certainly a place to have this allowance. We have the code and the enforcement to make sure that this isn't a nuisance. Doesn't mean it won't happen. I have a neighbor dispute right now about dogs. It will happen, it will continue to happen, but it requires everybody to work together. I think this is a good thing. I think it brings us in line with other communities. That's why I support it, but I don't vote. At this point, I'll open it up to the council. Alderman Gukic.
Again, I do support it. When we did talk about this the last time through, resident came up, she's out in the audience, and she had some very good suggestions, I thought, concerning rental properties, number of dogs, fencings, breeders. There was a little more meat to actually what was in the ordinance. Did any of that come up for discussion, or was it, was it legal to do, to just restrict renters to two dogs or rental properties, you know, without being owner occupied?
I won't speak to the legal aspect of it, I just go by what my conversations were with staff, that there's enforcement measures to handle any situation in the city, whether you're talking about fences, whether you're talking about barking, whether you're talking about rental units versus houses, all those things are already in place. It requires enforcement, it requires neighbors cooperating, communicating with the police when there is an issue before it becomes a more, you know, the tension increases, all of those things are already in place. So, I think at this point, we certainly can look down the road at some of these other measures if the issues come in front of us, but for this specific item, this is really the discussion, three versus two, in my mind. Alderman Tillman.
I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I missed the last discussion. This was held over, correct?
Correct.
Okay. First of all, what was the makeup of the committee? I need to, if I catch up here a little bit. Who was on this committee? Committee? There's a reference to a committee here.
I think that's from 2009. So, that was in 2009 when the issue was sent to look at.
So, there hasn't been any other research since then?
No, no, there hasn't.
There's been lots of research done by the city attorney.
Okay, all right. Briefly, is there anything we should know before?
I can just get up to current Alderman Tillman, there. I mean, the committee back from 2009 was Chief Bauer, the health director, which was Judy Price, city treasurer Barb Guckenberg, and the city administrator, then Pat DeGrave. So, in terms of what was set forth in the council report that was held from last agenda, the bottom line is that the consensus from the committee at that time was that no change was necessary. In addition to that, there was no reason to believe that the two-dog limit was unduly restrictive. So, from the last meeting, the directive from the council was to hold the matter, review this as a whole, and perhaps add something regarding cats based upon further discussion, but there was no direction regarding additional parameters to incorporate in the ordinance beyond the two-dog to three-dog limit. So, encapsulated, I would say that this issue has been considered and brought before various councils a number of times, extensively, more recently, I would say, with this 2009 committee. So, you've heard their conclusions, as I just stated. So, I think that the issues before the council tonight are to consider, as the mayor indicated, adopt the ordinance that's before you, if there is some further discussion regarding a cat limitation to be included that was mentioned at the last meeting, or something else. I think the bottom line is, as the mayor indicated, and as part of my investigation based upon what was put before me in terms of the request to review this ordinance and whether or not an increase would be prudent, I know that the mayor has done a considerable amount of due diligence, and especially in terms of his conversations with citizens and then MADDAC. I also spoke with the police chief, given my experience in terms of complaints and citations that are issued, certainly, there are a number of private neighborly issues that can come up with pets, dogs, things of that nature. I think it was mentioned at the last meeting in terms of the general consensus to not want to over-fence, so to speak, within the community, but to balance that certainly with protection of citizens and to have each individual determine as they see fit what they would want in terms of their home, their residence area. So, to that extent, I would say that there are options that we can certainly explore. If there's something additional, I think that the mayor stated it in terms of dogs at large, vicious dogs, animals that are prohibited, exotic animals, things of that nature are set forth in our code, and in terms of looking at other neighboring municipalities and what might be appropriate for the city of Oak Creek, what we've got is one discrete change in the dog limit ordinance for you tonight. But if there's something additional that would be brought back another time, I would ask for some directive as to what that might be, if it would be to exceed the limit of three, or something additional, or if it would be as some municipalities have a carve-out of a whole new provision for what some call a fancier's permit, which would require an additional process, a license, a permit, a review process, probably, and additional fees for exceeding whatever, for example, this limit might be. So, that's it in a nutshell.
Thanks for that update.
Other questions or comments?
Can I?
Go ahead, Stowe.
Okay. I'm just going to speak for myself. I've been an alderman for 14 years now, and some of the most difficult, not the most difficult, but many difficult situations have involved pets. I've seen, seen quite a few problems with, especially dogs, not so much the cat area, but dogs. And as far as I'm concerned, moving from two to three is only going to exacerbate the problem. I don't see a need for it. I wouldn't support a three-dog limit. I also think we should be addressing a cat limit. Given the numbers we have in front of us, it looks like we are neglecting that in the city. I would have no problem with a two-dog, two-cat, or two-dog, three-cat limit. That's just my opinion. Actually, I'm undergoing two situations right now. That's one of the reasons I can't support it tonight. I've got two neighbors that are having problems at the present time, so.
Thank you. Alderman Gukic.
Hereover from the last meeting, I did ask that we discuss adding the cat provision into the ordinance, and I still feel that we should.
I've got an audience request to speak from Veronica Olson. Restate your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Veronica Olson, and I'm from 3583 East Northbrook Boulevard. And I just wanted to take time today to thank all of the aldermen and the city attorney and the mayor for their time and help with this topic, and I just wanted to talk to you today about why this is so important to me and my family. And it's really important to us because we have a very big love for animals in general. And the shelter I volunteer at, along with many other shelters, to adopt a dog, they do many extensive background checks, and with the ordinance that it currently is, which is two, which we also currently own two dogs, we cannot adopt a third dog unless the ordinance is raised to three. And while my time volunteering at the shelter, I've realized that I do have a big passion for animals, and that's led me to believe that I want to be a vet when I get older. And my family strictly just wants to rescue a dog, to show it that it is still loved, and it needs to be loved, and people care about animals like that. And so, please consider changing this ordinance, otherwise, no adoption will take place for my family, because we really want to have the happily ever after that we see so many other families having at the shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. You're a great speaker for a young age. Well done. Alderman Verhalem.
To address the number, I guess, we're still probably in the realm of area that every other community has got around us. I mean, most of them got two. There's a good, a good share to have three, along with a cat limit. I don't see any problem with going from two to three. As stated before, I think we have plenty of ordinances on the books to deal with troublesome animals, whether they're in a kennel outside or whatever. That falls into the nuisance ordinance, or noise ordinance, or whatever it happens to be, you know, dogs that aren't kept properly on a leash or whatever. So, there's all kinds of enforcement things to take care of errant pets, I guess is the word. And the number really has nothing to do with it, it's the owners that are responsible for the pets. So, whether you have... So whether you have one dog that's roaming the neighborhood, or three dogs that are well-behaved and kept the way they're supposed to, I don't think the pets aren't the root of their problem. It's usually the owner that's negligent. We have the ordinances on the books to enforce that.
Couldn't agree more. Other questions or comments? Anything, you know, we've talked about this cat thing. In my eight years of alderman mayor, I've never had one email or call on cats in my entire career. Couldn't tell you if people have 20 cats, or one cat, or what they have. We may have a comment on cats. Comment on cats? No. You want to speak right now? Okay. Jean Rotten? All right, I got it right. Welcome. Name and address for the record.
Jean Rotten, R-H-O-T-E-N. I'm at 4630 North 135th Street in Brookfield. I actually am the executive director of the rescue group that several Oak Creek kids volunteer for. We have Veronica Peyton and Abby who come regularly. We've come to the Oak Creek High School, to the middle school, done presentations on the importance of rescuing, educating the community, what it takes to do population reduction. And you guys have an outstanding number of kids who get it. They know what it's like to rescue. They know what it's like to be responsible for a pet. And they have very good and supportive parents as well. Personally, I think you should be very proud of your community, because you've shown us some really excellent things. As a rescue, we do extensive background checks. We do not allow anybody in the Oak Creek community to adopt a third animal. We do the same with any other community. If they have any type of limits, we will honor those limits, because we do not want to see an animal displaced. Recently, as just this week, we received calls from people in Oak Creek asking us to find a home for their third animal because they were sighted, and they have to find a new home. People come into your community not knowing, and I'm not saying that ignorance is an excuse, but they come into your community not knowing that two is the limit, because three or five with a fancier's permit and things like that surround you. They're all over the place. And in the city of Brookfield, we have no limit. I realize some people really hate that, but we don't have a limit. And my animals are well-cared-for. I happen to have six dogs. I have no complaints from my neighbors. I think it's how I take care of them, and I think it's how your residents will take care of their animals. Mr. Mayor, you referenced that you talked to Matic about the importance of being able to save these animals. There's a number of families in your community who have requested the ability to foster for rescues, for humane societies. They can't do it if they have two dogs of their own, because your ordinance says they can't. And we won't even put a foster dog in their home, because you say they can't have a third dog. So even though it's temporary, and what they would be doing is giving back to the community and being able to help, they can't do that and still be in compliance with the law. You've got a great opportunity here to make a very minor change, allowing some families to extend themselves, to help, help Matic, help the rescues, help the community as a whole, because there are a large number of stray animals in Milwaukee, in Milwaukee County, and the surrounding areas that people don't even know exist. I can tell you that I receive over 100 emails every day asking for help with an animal. I receive hundreds of phone calls, text messages, and please, on a monthly basis, just begging me to take an animal, because they can't keep it because of an ordinance, because of a family member. I have many friends who live in Oak Creek. They have two dogs of their own. Their mother passed away. What do they do with the dog? This dog is eight or nine years old, has lived with their mother their entire life. They can't take in that animal, because your ordinance says they can't have a third animal. You know, there's a lot of reasons to raise this. The community around you, the ability to do some good. Nobody's asking you to make it an unlimited number, to make it 10, to make it six. They haven't even asked for a request for a fancier's permit. They're just looking to add one animal to their home. So on behalf of the great community of Oak Creek, and the number of them that I have met through doing rescue, which has been quite a few, I'm amazed at how many people will drive quite a distance to volunteer for the group. You have a wonderful community, I'm asking you to take a look and support them in their increase of one animal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, I have the sheet again. Just did a quick, from the research that we did, we've looked at cats. The most allowed is West Alice, which is four. Are the other ones have no limit? Is that what it is? So we're the only city that has no cat limit, so people can have as many cats as they want. So I would ask the council if there's any impetus to do anything with limiting cats. Again, I haven't had a lot of experience, no experience, dealing with people complaining about them. Or do we just want to go on the item that's in front of us?
No, I just have a comment. I'm prepared to move, as we are with the ordinance in front of us, just to move on the dog number issue. I think the cat stuff can be directed back to staff to take a further look at that particular issue, if there's council support to move on that. But I'm fully comfortable moving on the issue with the three-dog limit in the household. I think it really is, it is being a responsible owner and being a responsible neighbor, and we have laws and ordinance on the books to deal with folks who are not, so I'm comfortable that way.
So it sounds like there's no direction on cats, I'm hearing. So we will leave that status quo, and we'll get, I'll take, accept the motion on the ordinance as presented in the agenda item. Someone wants to make it?
I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance number 2811, repealing and recreating section 7.44 of the municipal code regarding limitation of dogs on occupied premises, increasing the total number of dogs allowed from two to three.
Kibich will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kibich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Item passes. All right, moving forward. I consideration, item seven is consideration of ordinance number 2805, repealing and recreating section 2.05 of the municipal code, changing the polling place locations for the city of Oak Creek. City clerk, or city attorney? City clerk. Just one quick note, Alderman Toman, I believe we held this based on your...
It affects my district, right?
Well, we did read your note into the comments.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, so after the consideration, this item was held. We took a look at the different locations that were considered and that were suggested by council. I have secured the National Guard Armory as a new polling location for District Four as requested. National Guard Armory was selected by common council on June 7th meeting. They are available for the upcoming elections. We're working now with them for a contract, and it looks like it might be a really good solution. I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Any questions? Alderman Toman?
Do we have any indications as to what the contract would be, or...
So right now, what they do, the contract has been submitted. We were required to have a certificate of insurance on file, which we submitted to them. It is the government and the military, so they need to run it up. And I know that there is a fee for the rental of the facility or for the use. However, I haven't been told whether or not we will be charged that fee. So I'm waiting to hear what that would be. But the contract is very simple. It's more of a rental of the facility for that day.
Okay. We have no idea what the fee would be then?
We don't. And I have been working with the master sergeant who runs the facility, and he said it varies, because they haven't rented out this particular facility in such a long time. He doesn't quite know what that fee would be, but I'm optimistic that it will be nominal.
Just as long as we're not being held hostage, once we make the commitment...
Is that Bill Crick that's still in charge?
No, it's actually a National Guard member.
Okay. Just a comment. Thank you for holding this. Obviously affects my district. It's the fourth district. I've had a lot of negative phone calls. People do not want it moved. But after reasoning with them, I, you know, the argument that trumps everything in this issue is the safety of our kids. And that's the bottom line. And after you talk to them long enough on the phone, they pretty much agree with me. It's been, it's been a battle over the phone with some people, but I support it being moved from the school. And it's actually, you know, it was moved, how many years ago? Was it three years ago or four years ago?
It was moved at...
It was moved from Carrollton to...
Fall of 2012.
Deerfield. And now it's being moved again, so it, I hope the rest of the council would be on board with the suggestion I want to make here tonight. I would like to see incorporated with this mailing, and I don't know if this was talked about last time, but I talked with the city clerk about it, about emphasizing early voting. There's going to be some hardship here. There's longer distances to travel. You have, you have a presidential election in November, which could incorporate bad weather. It may hold the vote down. So early vote, if you can emphasize early voting, or any other suggestions you can come up with to get the vote out, because that's important.
So there's three things that I'll be sending out to all the residents in District Four, and then much of this will be advertised to the community as well. They will be receiving a mailing that instructs them on early voting. By state statute, we are permitted to do 40 hours a week of early voting for the two weeks preceding the election, each election. So that will be here. They will also be instructed on how to obtain an absentee ballot via mail. So they'll have plenty of time to fill out an application online or to come in, and we can facilitate that process for them. I'm also doing a voter registration drive during both of the early voting sessions, both in August, what would be July, and then the end of October for each election, and that would be here at City Hall. So I'll give them information on how that'll ease, the early registration drive here at City Hall will ease the congestion at the polling location, making it go a little bit smoother, and that's citywide. So they'll have all the information, hopefully, that will encourage them that if they find difficulty in changing the location, they can come in here, and we can help them the best we can.
That'll be part of this mailing?
Yes, yes. So it'll be a notice of their polling location change, and included in that information will be these alternative options for them.
We should also have the opportunity to include a notice in our new city magazine, which will be out before the election on the change, including maybe a map of where they have to go.
And the website.
And the website, social media.
Okay. Good, thank you.
I think you're good. Any other questions on the polling places? All right, motion on seven?
I'm going to make a motion for the council to adopt ordinance number 2805, an ordinance to repeal and recreate section 2.05 of the municipal code to change the polling place locations for the city of Oak Creek. Common council selected National Guard Armory on June 7th, 2016.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kibich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
All right, under new business, I think we have to take 10 before 8. So let's do 10 as a consideration of resolution number 11719-062116, approving a third amendment to tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement, and collateral assignment of tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement, consenting to the assignment and assumption of tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement from Oak Creek Hotel Group LLC to Drexel Square Hotel Group LLC in the second district. City administrator.
First, let me start. The principal, Bob Guston, of this new development sends his apologies. He cannot be here. He's in New Mexico. One of the other principals is in California tonight, or otherwise they would be here in front of the council. The council will recognize that this issue has been around since at least 2010. We had started with a Four Points Hotel at, on Howell Avenue, south of College Avenue, at a time when development was very difficult to achieve, and financing for hotels were very difficult to achieve. We've had a series of developers involved in this project. We had discussions and thought that the best location for a hotel would be as part of Drexel Town Square. I think it really adds an exciting element to here, as well as a pretty good tax base. So we've got a change of ownership. We've got a proven hotel operator that runs hotels in New Mexico and other areas throughout the West. Importantly, he had the capital to be able to make the developers' contributions to make this project go. The financing is in place. Most of the documentation that we require, and we have extensive documentation about the company and about the process, has already been submitted to us. This company has already received footing and foundation permits from the state. The expectation, if this moves forward tonight, is for the closing to take place on July 7th or July 8th. Construction, I am told by Core, construction would begin probably the following Monday. They are ready to go. So we would see construction beginning in July on this project. Some of the details here, this is a change of ownership. This is a finance development agreement. There are city TIF incentives, $1,450,000 for this project that's been consistent now for some period of time. If we could show on the screens, I've got some renderings of this building, I believe. I think the change in franchise from the Four Points to the Marriott Town Place Suites is a positive one. The plan commission, I think, has felt that this is an improvement in terms of the aesthetics. This project should help to activate the western, or the eastern side of the town square. Let's see if we have those visuals. What's that? Do you have those on? Okay. I'd ask Caesar to put those on. Apparently, they're not here, but...
Why don't you keep talking, Doug will pull them up.
But we do have, I think it's a very attractive building on the site. We did increase the rooms from 108 to 112. And I think that would be some of the comments I'd have. Perhaps the city attorney wants to talk a little bit about the assignment and assumptions that have taken place of some of that legal work that she's worked very hard on. Maybe you want to make a few comments on that, Melissa.
I can advise the council that, yes, you have three documents before you tonight. I think it's fair to say that you're well aware of the development and progress, and grateful for this day with this project coming. But the bottom line is that the Third Amendment incorporates the dates that we are at in terms of commencement of construction and conditions precedent. I can advise the council, and I know that you've been made aware of this before, but prior to the release of any grant, this is a visual of some of the documents that need to be provided in terms of everything that's in our finance development agreement, as those conditions that need to be met prior to the release of any city funds. So we need to account for that. That's part of the contract with the developer. And in terms of the Third Amendment, I can advise you that the commencement and completion of work, as contemplated, are set forth with the commencement of construction on or before September 1st, and open for business with the general public on or before December 1st of 17. The bottom line is that I think we're on solid footing to move forward with this project. And in terms of the discussions to date with the team, I would say that there has been concerted progress. So I feel confident about it. And as to the other two documents, the assignment relates to certainly the change in the entity, and the collateral assignment is an update of a document that we had previously, again, regarding the change in entity. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them, but I think that our city administrator set it forth in terms of a modified and, if not better, project.
One point I failed to make is, from a financial standpoint, obviously, there's been delays in the construction of this project. But the agreement that you have in front of you in the exhibit that the developers agreed to shows a $6 million assessed valuation as of 1116 this year. That was not the case, so they will be getting a bill from us later in the year. And we've got a letter of credit and a guarantee for that, for that difference between the value of what the property is and what it was to be on our original schedule. So that's important for us, because that's how we pay the bonds and the incentives that we have. That's why we have these guarantees and the guaranteed minimum values, and I think that's an important point for the council, and I think for the public as well. Doug has been able to show some of the renderings of the... Doug has been able to show some of the renderings of the building, and I think you'd probably agree that that's a modern-looking building. I think it works very well with some of the residential building that we have on the north and the west side of the scale, and I think very attractive.
It looks like it matches the architecture of Drexel Town Square, too, which is kind of a significant development. I'm not sure that was true with the last version, so that's good. Jerry, what about the notion, I probably don't even want to go down this road, but I'm going to anyway, but by some people that if you sprinkle fairy dust on the property, someone will just come and develop it with no incentive to do anything, and I hear it all the time now. What about that notion?
It really doesn't happen that way. It's really important for us to have the right mix of uses so that we can have the long-term vitality in the Drexel Town Square. This is one of the uses we really wanted to see there. We thought that particularly for some of the commercial users, having a turnover of people who are visiting the hotel really helps the restaurants, when you think about that, think about your own behavior. When you go into a new town, you're probably going to eat one meal perhaps at that facility if they have it, and then you want something that you can walk by to that looks interesting or a close drive. That's going to help, I think, very much activate successful businesses throughout. When we, there's a little bit of a carryover on this project in that we started this in a time where you couldn't get financing, period, for these projects. Paul Thompson, who's in the audience, and I, and our former city attorney, spent hours and hours trying to work through financing, basically for this hotel when it was at another site, and it was extremely difficult to find anybody who would finance things at that time. So, this was a carryover from that in terms of the agreements that we'd had. We'd actually had numbers of $4.5 million at one time, I don't know if you remember that, but this is down $3 million from that. I think a better product, better location all the way along, and I think that in order to get folks to build the kind of quality we want, some incentives are necessary, and we do have the guarantees in there for both the hotel tax, which is pledged for these projects, as well as the property tax. So, this is a very good project for the district, provides a lot of income to help pay the existing debt we have there.
And for the folks who think the only thing we do in TIFs is to provide incentive, here's just a short list of companies that we've brought to Oak Creek that are in TIFs but receive zero financial assistance: Adtech, Black Bear, Chick-fil-A, GMX, Johnstone Supply, Liberty Property Trust, Meyer, Panda Express, PetSmart, Waters Senior Living, US Bank, Water Street Brewery, with about another handful of ones that are proposed. It's a mix. It's not done one way, it's not done, you know, it doesn't have to be always financially incented in TIFs. We do a mixture of options. This is one of those options, as Jerry said, and he's right, because I lived through this entire process. This started at $4 million for what I think was a lesser hotel on a different site. I think we've upgraded the hotel, a lower financial incentive. I think it'll be another one of the key buildings in Drexel Town Square, nearly filling out the property that some people said we would never fill out. I think we've done it in three years. So, I think it dispels a lot of those arguments that are people making that aren't based on anything but anger and resentment. Bridget?
It's about protection. When we're looking at going, upcoming on the agenda for this debt, the MAV that we have brings in a range of $130,000 up to $200,000 each year in increment value that will go towards paying that debt. In addition, the hotel is estimated to bring in around $130,000 a year in room tax revenue, which will go to pay that TIF district down sooner. That room tax revenue, because it's within a TIF district, has to stay in that district. So, that's different than some of the room tax conversations that we've been having where it leaves and goes, you know, through Economic Development Fund. That can't happen when it's in the TIF district.
Great point. Questions and comments from the council? Alderman, Gail?
Mayor, thanks for the comments, Jerry, as well. I just concur with, you know, this has been, I think, from a staff standpoint, probably an unbelievable exercise in perseverance. I recall those conversations when Greg Truppani originally proposed this project along with a bigger development down on College and Howell Avenue, you know, we had authorized an incentive of $4.5 million, and when Drexel Town Square came along and was a vision, this was probably on, I don't remember if exactly, on the original drawing, but this was an early concept, and this was a hotel concept on this property at this particular site was desired and seen as one of those investments we made to seed the project to hopefully guarantee its success, and I continue to view, see it that way. The commitment upfront, it was four years ago that we made this commitment of this TIF incentive for the developer, I think at that time was a smart and astute investment, I continue to believe that. So, this project, I spoke to the developer today again, they're looking to start here after, as Jerry has said, you know, years of struggling to arrange a good team of equity and a good team of developers that's finally ready to go, and I'm happy to see it happen.
Aside, anything?
I was good with it from the start, so...
Alderman Bakovic. All right, nothing else, motion on 10.
Bakovic will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11719-062116, approving a Third Amendment to the Tax Incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement and a collateral assignment of Tax Incremental District Number 11 Finance Developmental Agreement, and consenting to the assignment and assumption of the Tax Incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement from the Oak Creek Hotel Group LLC to Drexel Town Square Hotel Group LLC.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Paul, you're up. Item eight, consideration of Resolution Number 11713-062116, authorizing the issuance and sale of $5,825,000 of taxable general obligation promissory notes, Series 2016A.
Welcome.
Thank you, glad to be here. First correction.
Yep.
The dollar amount of the borrowing is $5,750,000 as opposed to $5,825.
Our critics will be incrementally happier.
And the reason for that is, when we did the original planning for this about a month and a half ago, we thought the interest rate might be 2.625%, and it's not, it's 2.125%.
For the layperson in the audience and our critics, having an interest rate that low signifies what in your mind?
Two things. Good interest rate environment, you also have a very good credit. The rating on this is a little different. This is what's called a MiG 1 rating, Moody's Investors Grade 1, which is assigned to short-term borrowings. It is the highest rating you can get for a short-term borrowing. They don't get higher than MiG 1, they go down from there to 2, to 3, to 4. So, that's a result of that.
Thank you.
Because we don't have the increment from the development yet, we have to borrow for the interest. That's called capitalizing the interest. Well, if the interest rate goes down from 2.6% to 2.1%, we need less capitalized interest. That changes the issue size down by $75,000 to $5,750,000.
Essentially a good problem to have.
Essentially a very good problem to have. Jerry and Bridget, do you have the Moody's credit report?
I do. I would like to also note that Moody's reaffirmed our AA2 rating, so they go and they issue a rating for the issuance that you're on the table for right now, and then they also reissue or change your potential rating for all of your existing debt. So, in their report, I always love the second paragraph, that's my favorite paragraph of each of the report, and it states, "The MiG 1 rating reflects the expected market access for takeout refinancing, adequate management of refinancing, planning for contingencies in case of unforeseen market disruption, the city's long-term debt credit characteristics. Affirmation of the AA2 geo-rating reflects the city's sizable tax base adjacent to the City of Milwaukee, above-average wealth indices, stable financial operations resulting in maintenance of solid reserves, and above-average debt burden with a large amount of debt subject to refinancing risk and modest unfunded pension liabilities." So, that's your summary. That's your summary of positives related to our finances.
And I think on the report that I asked you for about just general health and welfare of our finances, you indicated to me that the AA2 rating was actually a higher rating than we had 10 years ago.
Correct.
And that's real stuff, that's not somebody just saying it. That's an independent group verifying that our creditworthiness is better than it was 10 years ago. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any questions?
Thank you much.
Motion on eight, thank you.
Just be sure that we have the $5 million...
Yeah, the correct number is, what is it again?
$5,750.
Okay. Motion person, please reflect that number. Alderman, Gail.
I will move to approve Resolution 11713-062116, authorizing the issuance and sale of $5,750,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes, Series 2016A.
Bakovic will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Paul. Item nine is a consideration of motion to concur with the Personnel Committee's recruitment profile and salary range recommendation to assist in the hiring of the next city administrator. HR Director is here to inform us on that proposal.
Good evening. Becky Shermer, Human Resources Manager for the city. Before you, you have the recruitment profile that was designed by GovHR USA to advertise the city administrator position. The only thing missing from the proposed profile is a complete salary range. It was inserted in there as a current salary of $120,000, but possible higher starting salary under review. According to Municipal Code, the salary of the city administrator shall be as the common council shall determine and prescribe. So, the main recruiter working on this project presented to the Personnel Committee two weeks ago, as well as this evening, and he informed the committee that city administrator salaries from other local municipalities range anywhere from $105,000 to $150,000, and he recommends that we advertise a range of plus or minus $125,000 to $135,000. The Personnel Committee also made a motion this evening to recommend to the common council an advertised salary of plus or minus $125,000 to $135,000.
Okay, that's the only change?
Yes.
Comments? Alderman, Tolman.
Thanks, Becky, for that explanation. We vetted this tonight at the Personnel Meeting, and the general consensus was that we were on the low end as compared to cities of comparable size. Nobody ever likes to go overboard on salaries, but the general consensus was that in order to find a qualified person and to handle the issues that the city is encountering right now, we're going to need probably not an upstart person, which would be at the low end of the salary range, we're going to need to go a little bit higher. And that's how we arrived at the 125 to 135. It should also be noted now that our current city administrator started six years ago with the city and had a salary of 115, I believe, Jerry, at the start. It's currently at 120. He's been very cooperative over the years, has not pushed the council and the mayor for an increase in salary. He's basically got $5,000 over five years, which is just, when you look at the volume of work that's come out of that office and the progress the city has made, it's really kudos to our current city administrator, but I think he would agree with me if he stayed on longer than his six-year term now and did not want to retire, that he would be asking for more money, and it would be very warranted. So, that's one of the reasons we came to this conclusion. Thank you.
Jerry?
The only thing I would say on that, obviously, we've had some pretty tough times with Public Act 10 and 32, and I thought that it was important over time to show some leadership there. A lot of employees weren't getting some increases, and I thought that was important for me to do that as well, but I think the pay is low for the comparable communities, and I think, you know, the committee is making the right recommendations. So, I'll give you a little bit in terms of where I'm at, you know, I'll hear from that at home a little bit, but, you know, I felt that that was the right thing to do based on, you know, what the city's been doing and what other employees have had over time.
In this occurrence, there's a lot of demand out there for city administrators, there's lots of open positions. I think we're going to have to pay for, as Alderman Tolman said, the best candidate for a really tough job, given everything that goes on in Oak Creek. It should be a very high-demand job, given the, you know, excitement and buzz about the community, but I know there's other jobs that are out there. I think this is a reasonable salary range, and I think we should get some good candidates based on this pretty broad range, so that would be my take. Did you have something, Chief? Okay, you're just getting ready? Ready to tee it up? Any other comments? Alderman, Gail?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. I concur with Jerry and Mike. I think, given what I've seen from who we've hired from a recruiter standpoint, I think we should be very happy with the work that Lee has done so far. I think he'll do a good job for us in our process. He has developed some literature and advertisement materials to go out to our candidate pool. I think will speak very well for the city and represent us very well, so I'm looking forward to this process. But he did reiterate the fact, and if, given the extensive list of wishes and desires in that candidate description, we are likely going to have to look at a little higher salary range, given what we're going to want to see in a candidate. Different point in time, you may look at somebody else, but where we are is, as an organization and as a city, I think we can't afford to be training someone as we go, so I think that's important in that whole process. So, that's why, that speaks to that little bit of expanded salary range. That and the fact that we hope to entertain candidates from other states that typically have higher salary ranges than Wisconsin does for whatever reason. So, that's part of the process. We're going to deal with that, and the fact that there's at least three other communities in the metropolitan area in for job searches for city administrators as we speak. You're going to have no shortage of folks with opportunities to move, so that said, I think I'm very comfortable with the range we've recommended, and I support it moving forward.
And if you, at the risk of sounding overly defensive tonight, which probably I am given the last few meetings, take a look at the salary ranges of similar positions in communities around us. We don't overpay our leadership. We don't do it on the city side, we don't do it on the police side, we don't do it on the fire side. We underpay, and we get tremendous performance, I would argue, some of the best performance in the state, if not the country, in all of those levels and all those positions. But sometimes when you change leadership, you have to step up and pay a salary that gets you to the top tier of candidates. This is one of those times. We could settle, when you settle, you get less, and I don't want less, there's too much going on that we can't take that chance, so that's why I really enthusiastically support this. I think it's important that we show leadership on this side of it as we put ourselves out in the market, so that's why I feel so strongly about this. Any comments, questions? Go ahead, Alderman.
Just one quick one. I would happen to agree with the mayor for once that if you don't, if you don't, I mean, if you don't, if you don't...
Someone noted that.
Etch and stone might be the last time.
Might be the last time, yeah.
But I would agree that, you know, the caliber of talent is commensurate with the amount of pay and benefits you're going to offer somebody. I think you're going to get, you're going to get some good prospects with the salary range you guys put out there.
Anything else? Nothing, motion on nine.
One other comment before I make the motion. I think, does the rest of the council realize that we have competition in the area too for city administrator? That's another reason that we went this route, because there are other people with headhunters out there looking right now, so it's going to be a tough one. Hey, Tolman will make a motion to concur with the Personnel Committee's recruitment profile and salary range recommendation to assist in the hiring of the next city administrator. That salary range would be $125,000 plus or minus to, up to $135,000.
Bakovic will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tolman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
All right, first page of the agenda done. All right. Item 11 is a consideration of motion to approve a professional services agreement amendment in the amount of $17,500 with Bray Architects to complete the build-out of the EOC space at the Civic Center. City Administrator.
So, I think Bray performed quite well for the city in terms of the design of this building. We had created, and the council had approved, some shell space for an EO center on the second floor. We did not have, as we started the original process, the budget to be able to go through that. We've since identified dollars that we do have available for the build-out of the space. It would be our intention to have the EOC committee work with Bray to finalize the plan... plans and specs. Actually, there's not going to be a real significant amount as part of that, probably more of the input from the committee will be in some of the equipment that'll be in that space to make it fully functional. So, my hope would be that this work would be completed by early to mid-fall. So, in working with Bray, they've done some small projects like this for some other communities. They've got a list of contractors. I think we're probably just a couple of weeks away for reviewing the preliminary drawings here, and committee will be looking at that, so I think we can endorse that to you. Some of you on the Finance Committee will recall that there's been a commitment to use unspent funds from 2013, 2014, and 2015. Those were EOC funds that had been allocated for grant work and then dollars that hadn't been spent, so there's about $100,000 there available for the professional services work, the construction work, and we also expect to have quite a few dollars from the sale of the property that's east of here, which will be adequate to finish out the space, the furniture, the equipment that's needed there. And this is probably where Tom will talk with you, he's got gleam in his eyes, you know, they got all these fancy EOC centers. We think there's been an interest in both the Police Department and Fire Department for us to offer our space. I think to other communities as an EOC, we think we may be in a position to apply for some grants on that. They would have facilities here that I don't think that they would be able to find on their own. I think that's a discussion that we've had and seems to have support here internally.
For the Chief, before you get started, explain to the public why an EOC is important.
Well, I'd go back to originally the two and a half decades that we've had in emergency operations center in various locations around the city, and whether the disaster is man-made or natural, over the years, our EOC has served many purposes that have facilitated getting the city back in order, and basically there's four steps involved in emergency operation. It's the preparedness, the mitigation, recovery aspect, and there's one more that I can't think about off the top of my head at the moment. In this whole emergency operations realm, it puts the community back on its feet, and this aspect all comes out of the emergency operations center, which is basically from the executive group down to the basic city person that allows as a messenger to get this all running, the logistics and operations, to get it going. And in fact, this will fit in nicely to the strategic plan of a full-time dedicated space to this emergency operations center.
And, you know, it's one of those things you hope you never really have to use, but we do use it because we train, and we have, you know, meetings on a regular basis where we bring the whole team in.
Right.
We'll now have the ability to actually all go to that space and actually perform the real task that we would do in a real emergency.
And currently, our emergency operations center is at the Police Department. We are the backup for Milwaukee County, so it's, there's a whole set of, call it regionalization in this that you talked about, the survey that went out, that here is where we are sharing our space with other entities.
Questions? All right, motion.
Gale, move to approve a professional services agreement amendment in the amount of $17,500 with Bray Architects to complete the build-out of the EOC space at the Civic Center.
Guzakowski, Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
For Haaland.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Thank you Chief. Item 12 is a motion to approve a second amendment to the professional services agreement with Smith Group JJR for Lake Vista Design rebidding services in an amount not to exceed $92,220. City Administrator.
Quickly, the council will recall that we rejected bids for the lakefront project as they were out of our budget scope. We've engaged JJR to rebid that project and bid it into two components as opposed to one. We think that's going to be effective in reducing costs. We've also asked them to do some value engineering on both parts of that bid so that we can get those costs down further. Obviously, that took some significant work to pull all that together. They have indicated to us they are prepared to have that done by July 8th. We are prepared to have bid recommendation to the council. I think it's at your second meeting in August, August 16th, Mike shaking his head, yes. A lot of our staff have been involved, working on this, trying to resolve some of the cost issues, and worked very effectively on that. One thing I do want to point out, I had challenged Smith Group JJR in terms of a grant basis. I'd heard a lot about grants at the front end, but I hadn't seen very many that they had helped us get, so I said, "Show me the grants." There were some overages that they had had early on that I was not willing to pay for. I know they did the work, but it was out of scope, and I hadn't seen much work done on the grant. They did put a grant together, we did receive it, $100,000 for some of our non-motorized trails that are down there, so I'm more receptive to paying some of those costs, and I would recommend, I think there's 30,000 or 34,000 that's included, that we include this as part of the professional services agreement. So, we challenged them, they performed and did what they said they were going to, but I was, let you know that we were holding the line pretty tough before that.
Okay.
So, Mike, I don't know if you want to make any comments, you know, your staff has done a lot on this, and I know Doug's staff has actually done a lot of work on this as well.
Keep your comments to five minutes or less, please.
Thanks Jerry. You put it very well. Basically, we think that we still have time to get this project out to bid, probably get about two and a half months of construction time in to get a good jump on finishing the project up next year, so we still feel good going forward with this.
Oh, that wasn't even a minute. Good job. Other questions or comments? Alderman Haaland.
Just one question. We saw a talk south here about the lake bluff stabilization, and I know the work we're doing has nothing to do with lake bluff stabilization, but you, do you envision anything coming out of potential hazards with anything to do with the lake bluff that's going to affect anything we're going to do down there? And another question is, there a chance of getting some kind of grant money or something else, being that there is problems to the south of us, maybe we could kind of tail-end something else that Mount Pleasant is doing down to the south of us?
That's a very good question. The short answer is, no, we're not expecting any problems. There's bluff stability from two, three sources.
I know, we've dumped some, done some in the past.
The top of the bluff, the toe of the bluff, the bottom of the bluff, and that's what you're talking about. Long-term, that will be an issue, but short-term, it is not. So, I'm talking decades. We've got a master plan to actually take care of the toe. It's probably about $10 million along the lakefront. There would be grant money available at the federal level. We want to be in a position to monitor that if there's any, you know, big congressional Great Lakes projects that are out there. I know the mayor is going to be going to a Great Lakes consortium that next month or the month after, but that's not in our near-term plans, but it has to be dealt with in the long-term, and I'm talking, you know, probably decades or two. We don't believe that we have any erosion issues in the immediate, near-term, so. Was there another part of that that I missed?
Just that if there would be some kind of federal money coming up because of what's going on down in Mount Pleasant, if you could kind of, you know, maybe pick up a few dollars that you weren't really expecting out of it, even though we don't need it right now.
All right, well, we'll keep a monitor on that. It could be that we could get in on something, you know, if somebody else is having difficulties. I think that's what you're saying, is that we just stay aware of that, and if there is, try to jump on it.
Well, in our case, it'd be preventative.
Yeah.
Versus, I mean, theirs is immediate, so.
And the good news is, we actually do have a plan that, and this is part of the planning process, that could be incorporated. We wouldn't be thinking about it at that time, we've already think, thought about, we've got the science and some of the design work already in place.
Okay, nothing else, motion on 12.
Toman will make a motion to approve the second amendment to professional services agreement with Smith Group JJR for Lake Vista Design and Rebidding Services in an amount not to exceed $92,220. Haaland, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
For Haaland.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 13 is consideration of resolution number 11718-062116 authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations. Bridget?
This is the third year that the common council has not met for both meetings in the month of July, so from this meeting to your July 19th meeting, that leaves five weeks, and that's too long to not pay our bills. So, I would like to allow us to act as if there were the meeting on July 5th, we would release the checks then on Wednesday, and for the July 19th meeting, you would receive two vendor summary reports.
Objections? Motion.
Gale, move to approve resolution 11718-062116 authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations.
Guzakowski, Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakavich.
Aye.
For Haaland.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
And speaking of vendor summary, item 15 is a motion to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $633,777 and 0.06.
Just a note for item number 10, the description in retrospect was a little confusing of that $7,000 or 7125, only 125 is the election fee. I just figured that might be a sensitive comment with some of the other election fee talk tonight. The rest is for the summer concert series by the celebrations.
Got it, thanks. Any questions? Motion.
Gale, move to approve the 2016 vendor summary in the port in amount of $633,777.06.
Guzakowski, Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
For Haaland.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Under Engineering, item 16 is a motion to enter into an engineering service agreement with RA Smith National for the fee of $16,900 for the design of a site grading plan for the four adjoining properties at 8850, 8730, 8940, and 9010 South 5th Avenue in the 4th District. Mike.
Thanks Mayor. This is related to the property formerly known as the Peter Cooper Property or the Oak Creek Storage and Handling Property, now referred to as Lake Vista North, and this is a continuation of the redevelopment efforts. We are currently in the process of obtaining approvals for several activities on that site. These would include approvals concerning environmental remediation, redevelopment. We need to do significant grading on the site, we need to bring material to the site, and eventually need to clean cap. We also need to affect wetland property, wetland areas on the site. Basically, with all of these approvals in various stages of application and review and under pretty good scrutiny by the Department of Natural Resources, we thought prudent to get an overall grading plan developed so that we can demonstrate that we are not just bringing material to the site from various sources and stockpiling it, that there is an ultimate plan in mind. And so, we went out for proposals, and we received four, scored them, and basically the recommendation is for RA Smith to do that work.
Okay.
Oh, yes, yeah, big, big, big part. Three of these four properties are city properties comprising about 25 acres. The largest remaining parcel is actually owned by Wisp Park, that's 47 acres, so this proposal to do this work for 16,900 would be split between the city and Wisp Park on an acreage basis. So, basically, I think it's about 65% Wisp Park cost, 35% city cost.
Okay, good to know. Any questions? Alderman Toman.
Mike, do we have a plan as when the grading's actually going to be done?
We don't have a, we do not have a date in mind yet. Basically, there's been about 30,000 yards of material that's been brought to that site and stockpiled there. The bulk of that has come from the Drexel Town Square sites. We have a need to get rid of a big stockpile of about 17,000 yards that remains just north of the detention pond here. That's got to go as soon as possible. That's part of what we're trying to get approval for, so that would go to that site. Then, there remains possibility that some of these other developing sites may need a place to go with boils that they generate on their sites. Also, that's the plan, yes.
Yeah, and I think that ultimately, the grading that would take place would be part of what's called a RAP, a remedial action plan. We did an IRAP, which was an interim plan. We have to prepare that RAP that still has to take place, that shows the final destination of all that material and how it'll happen along with, as Mike has indicated, other wetlands. That won't be done before the end of the year, probably the spring of next year. The earliest we could do this work would be in 2017, and depends on how expensive it is, whether we have the funds to do it or not, so that's a work in progress.
Are you anticipating this dirt being moved yet this year?
Yes.
Soon.
A wishful thinking?
No, no, we're doing the analytics on it right now, and we're doing the approvals. We've done the application. We're referring it to as Mount Oak Creek, and we don't like it any more than you like it there, but we're working through the technical issues with the, and our, Mike and his staff are working with Byron Ramble on that, and we're hopeful that we will get approvals to move that soon.
Once that's removed, what's the, what will be the state of that property, just dirt or?
Yeah, it would be basically the same common dirt that's throughout the entire site, and it very well could be, depending on the development plans for that site as well as, for instance, the water site here, there's going to be additional needs to take the excavated materials to that site. The reason that works over at that site is the constituent, the constituency of the materials in the soil are consistent with what's at the lakefront and actually at lower levels of concentration, that's why it's allowed to be there. It's the same materials at lower concentration, so it doesn't create any worse situation. It actually improves things. Eventually, then, we'll have to put a final cap on that, and then the debate will be, it's going to be somewhere between six inches and two feet, and when you're talking about 80 acres, that's a lot of difference between the dollars, so we're still working through those issues with the department. And as Mike said, we got a lot of scrutiny on these, and we've spent a lot of time on these issues. Not a lot to show at this point, unfortunately.
Anything else? Motion.
Toman will make a motion to enter into an engineering service agreement with RA Smith National for the fee of $16,900 for the design of a site grading plan for the four adjoining properties at 8850, 8730, 8940, and 9010 South 5th Avenue.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
For Haaland.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Under Community Development, item 17 is a consideration of resolution number 11716-062116 approving a certified survey map for the property at 9330 South Nicholson Road in the 3rd District.
Thank you. The CSM will create one new lot with an existing residential home, which is Lot 1, and the larger parcel that also has a residential home. That larger parcel, which is Lot 2, could be redeveloped in the future and is currently being delineated for wetlands and flood plain. So, this, the CSM just merely takes off the existing home that's on Lot 1, retains the rest for future development. Should be noted that, again, prior to redevelopment of Lot 2, that a wetland donation is required, and that is currently being undertaken.
Thank you Doug. Any questions? Motion.
Gavitch will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11716-062116 approving a certified survey map for the property at 9330 South Nicholson Road. Guzakowski, Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakavich.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
For Haaland.
Epstein.
Item 18 is a consideration of resolution number 11717-062116 approving a certified survey map for the property at 7880 South 13th Street in the 1st District.
Thank you. Currently, the city owns the, a small parcel on the northwest quadrant of the intersection, section 13th, northeast, I'm sorry, quadrant of the intersection at 13th and Drexel, as that roadway, 13th Street, is reconstructed by the county in 2018. The design- The design has identified additional right-of-way requirements for westbound Drexel to northbound 13th since the last road extension. This recognizes the public use of that portion of the city property, puts that into right-of-way. City would retain a small outlot outside of the right-of-way for 13th Street.
Thank you.
I'm going to restate my comment that's in the fiscal impact here and correct myself. We have not had a deferred special assessment on a city-owned property since I have been here. So I went with my first inclination of writing it off. And after consulting with Jerry and Melissa this morning, we are actually going to pay ourselves the $1,300.
Got it. Thanks for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Motion?
Bakayevich will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11717-062116 approving a certified survey map for the property at 7880 South 13th Street. Guzekowski, Gale second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bakayevich.
Aye.
All right, since Alderman Guzekowski is not here, we'll have another licensed committee member. Alderman, Gale. 19.
As stated, minutes of the license committee meeting held on June 9th are attached for your perusal. With that, item number 19, Gale will move to grant an operator's license to Peter Lopac, 1815 10th Avenue, South Milwaukee.
Verhalen, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bakayevich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
20.
Gale will move to deny an operator's license to Jasmine Gonzalez, 1805 South State Street, Milwaukee for falsification of the application.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bakayevich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
21.
Gale will move to grant an operator's license to Barbara Robertson, 9720 South Austin Street, Oak Creek.
Verhalen, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bakayevich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
22.
Gale will move to grant an operator's license to Mitchell Dolan, 3685 South Rutland Avenue, St. Francis.
Verhalen, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Bakayevich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
23.
Gale will move to grant a special event permit to Rebecca Douglas Harvest Community Church, 6612 South Howell Avenue for a family movie night event on September 9th, 2016, subject to receipt of an event map and approval by the Fire Department.
Verhalen, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bakayevich.
Aye.
24.
24 was received after the license committee meeting. But with that said, Gale will move to grant an operator's license to the following individuals as listed, favorable background reports were received.
Verhalen, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bakayevich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
And 25.
This was also received after license committee. Matt, Gale will move to grant an original alcoholic beverage license to Yash Patel Fortune Inc. Doing Businesses Discount Tobacco and Liquor, 2151 East Rossin Avenue for the period July 1st, 2016 through June 30, 2017, with issuance subject to the payment of any fees due and department approvals.
Verhalen, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bakayevich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
And 25.
This was also received after license committee. Matt, Gale will move to grant an original alcoholic beverage license to Yash Patel Fortune Inc. Doing Businesses Discount Tobacco and Liquor, 2151 East Rossin Avenue for the period July 1st, 2016 through June 30, 2017, with issuance subject to the payment of any fees due and department approvals.
Verhalen, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bakayevich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
22.
Gale will move to grant an operator's license to Mitchell Dolan, 3685 South Rutland Avenue, St. Francis.
Verhalen, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Bakayevich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And 25.
This was also received after license committee. Matt, Gale will move to grant